Good evening. Tonight is Monday, February 17th, 2025, and it is the regular meeting of the Mount Lebanon Board of School Directors. We're present in room D 205 of the Mount Lebanon High School with public participation also available via Zoom. Before we get into our agenda, can all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Here.
Mrs. Crable?
Here.
Ms. Fleischer?
Here.
Mrs. Gelman?
Here.
Mrs. Gensel?
Here.
Ms. Guth?
Here.
Mr. Hoffman?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Wyland?
Here.
I move that it be resolved that the Board approves the minutes of the Policy Committee meeting held on January 13th, 2025, the discussion meeting held on January 13th, 2025, and the regular meeting held on January 27th, 2025.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstain? Okay, thank you. Moving on to Board Reports, we'll open with the Board President's Report. Assuming that I can see it. The Mount Lebanon School Board instituted the Extra Mile Award to recognize district staff members who demonstrate exceptional service to our students while exhibiting behavior that encourages others to follow their lead. This evening, I am pleased to welcome and recognize Krista Wagner for the Extra Mile Award. Ms. Wagner is the band director at Jefferson Middle School. For 31 years, Ms. Wagner has worked tirelessly to develop and inspire our band students through both formal classroom instruction and extracurricular activities. She arrives at school early and stays late for wind ensemble rehearsals. And there's more. During a recent performance, Ms. Wagner demonstrated just how she handles anything thrown at her with grace. In fact, she had to dodge shuttlecocks and conduct the band through the chaos of dying fire alarm batteries with humor and poise. I bet you can still catch that on Libo Live. She endures countless bus rides with our students, always bringing energy and enthusiasm. Her love for music is undeniable, and she inspires every student she teaches. In recognition of her unwavering dedication, exceptional leadership, and tireless efforts to enrich the student experience, Ms. Wagner is receiving the Extra Mile Award. Her passion for teaching and commitment to her students have left a lasting impact in our school community. Thank you.
Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's on a holiday.
Oh, are you kidding me?
It's fine.
That's great. Thank you so much.
You've got some good stuff.
Sure. Well, I found out she's a flute player, too, so we're keeping spirits. We have to buy that house.
Get away from my secret.
Oh. I'm gonna make a play.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm teaching. Donna played flute right now. We're gonna have to give the band.
I played the flute.
The band. I did, too. What is a flute player?
I played the flute.
I did, too.
I think Brenna plays the flute as well.
Just clarinet.
Clarinet, okay.
Brenna played the clarinet.
Trombone.
She's chiming.
I'm sending one your way.
All right.
Yeah.
All right. As we do every month, we're gonna highlight some items from our district inclusivity calendar. Every February, the United States honors the history, achievements, and contributions of African Americans during Black History Month, or as I like to call it, History Month. Today is also Presidents' Day. Originally established in 1885 to honor George Washington's birthday, it recognizes all U.S. presidents. And some highlights from around the district. The Mount Lebanon High School cheerleading team competed at the National School Spirit Championships at Walt Disney World Resort. Congratulations to our cheerleaders for earning a spot in the semifinals. The Mount Lebanon girls' swimming team won a Whipple section title, and our boys' team won the section in a three-way tie with Upper St. Clair and Bethel Park. And if you tried to park tonight, you might notice that our boys' basketball team is in the Whipple playoffs, as is our girls' basketball team. This month, Mount Lebanon proudly hosted the PMEA District One Chorus Festival, showcasing talented singers from our region and promoting excellence in music education with more than 200 students from 55 school districts. Congratulations to our six Mount Lebanon singers who made the districts, and best of luck to the two students heading to the regions. Join us for an evening of safety, health, and well-being. On Wednesday, February 19th, Mount Lebanon School District will host the Safety Partnership Forum, featuring expert-led sessions on cyberbullying, understanding addiction, general community safety, and more with our partners at Mount Lebanon Police and Fire and MRTSA. For details and session descriptions, please visit our website. The Great Alumni Award, established by the Mount Lebanon High School Student Council in 2004, recognizes outstanding alumni who have made a significant impact in their communities and professions. Honorees are selected based on their exceptional contributions in at least one of the following areas: improving the lives of others, community service, volunteer work, or professional achievement. Nominations for the 2025 Great Alumni Award are being accepted through April 15th, 2025. Winners will be recognized at a special luncheon and honored during the homecoming football game this fall. For more information, also please visit our website. And that concludes my report. Now, we are at the Superintendent Report.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Fleischer. This evening, I'll be presenting the findings from our focus groups for our strategic plan. Just to give a brief overview, in October of this year, we began the process of strategic planning to shape the district's path over the next seven years. As a reminder, a strategic plan is a comprehensive document that outlines the district's goals, objectives, and strategies to ensure we achieve our vision for the future. This is just a reminder of the different processes. We are now completed with the conduct focus groups and present findings after tonight's presentation, and will move on to planning group work sessions with the goal of presenting a draft in May of 2025. Just to give an overview of the focus groups, we saw quite a few people sign up for these, both students, staff, families, and community members. As you can see at the bottom, we had quite a few options. We had a PTA council, I'm sorry, we had a PTA council focus group, we had an in-person group at the high school, we had a virtual morning session, we had an in-person at Mellon Middle School, a virtual midday, an in-person at Jefferson Middle School, a virtual evening, and then we did a focus group at each of the schools. At the middle schools, we had one for each grade level, six, seven, and eight, elementary fifth grade, and then at the high school, we did it during lunch periods. And then in addition to that, we held a few of our English language learner families in translated focus groups for them. So just an overview of the methodology for the focus group. Participants were provided expectations for the session prior to the start of each session. Focus group participants were also asked the same standard questions, except students were not asked the question about district finances. A note taker recorded all responses and then transcribed notes of the focus group to ensure it contained no information that would identify the person that was giving the information. In addition to that, personal stories were not captured in the notes. After all focus groups were completed, the results were analyzed overall for common themes. Again, we had a total of 518 participants, which was amazing. Fifty-two staff, 332 students, and 134 parents and guardians. Our students were active participants, which was fantastic. So we're gonna go through each of the questions and then give the key takeaways. When we think about the key takeaways, these are really things that were showing up as themes across all three groups for these particular questions. So the first one is the introductory question, and individuals were asked, what do they believe the distinctive features that define the experience at Mount Lebanon School District were? Or in other words, what do you get here that you wouldn't expect from other public school districts? Key takeaways for this one was a strong sense of community and that we're a walking district, high quality of education and academic excellence, exceptional teachers and staff commitment, broad ranges of extracurricular opportunities, independence in life preparation, school culture and student well-being, and unique facilities and resources. For the first question after that introductory one, it talks about the survey results. Eighty-four percent of survey respondents report positive satisfaction with the overall quality of the school district. The participants were asked, what do you consider to be the district's strengths and areas for growth? The summary of strengths are at the top. They're very, very similar to the page before or the question before. While Mount Lebanon School District continues to excel academically, maintains a strong community, and offers diverse programs, areas for improvement include: enhancing support for special education gifted and middle-tier students, balancing academic rigor with student well-being, and equipping students for the academic rigor at the high school level; reevaluating technology use, particularly for younger students; improving diversity, inclusion, and cultural representation in staff and curriculum; strengthening communication in schools between teachers, administration, and parents; and reassessing financial priorities to ensure resources are allocated equitably. Question number two was, Mount Lebanon's current mission is to provide the best education possible for each and every student. What does this mission mean to you? Some of the key takeaways for this question were a personalized education. The mission should ensure that every student, regardless of ability level, receives an education tailored to their needs. College and career readiness. Education should prepare students for a variety of future paths, not just college, but also vocational training and other career opportunities. Holistic development. Beyond academics, students should develop social, emotional, and interpersonal skills. Equity and inclusion. Schools should meet students where they are, supporting diverse learning needs such as IEP, GIEP, and ESL, and fostering an inclusive environment. Critical thinking and problem-solving. Education should focus on deeper learning, not just test scores or memorization. Technology and AI awareness. Schools need a forward-thinking approach to how AI and technology will shape future careers and ethical considerations. And then leadership and real-world application. Opportunities for leadership, teamwork, and community engagement should be available at all levels. The next question. Survey responses show that classroom instruction is one of the top four priorities of the district. What do you see as classroom instruction needs for our district? First one of the key takeaways is to expand classroom differentiation to ensure middle-range students are challenged, addressing staffing shortages, particularly PCAs, substitutes, and special education teachers, revising the curriculum, more hands-on learning, executive functioning instruction, and up-to-date materials, increase career exploration programs, particularly internships, shadowing, and vocational education, and then improve communication between schools and families about testing, academic support, and career programs. Question number four. Survey responses show that supporting students' physical, emotional, and social well-being is another one of the top four priorities. What do you see as the physical, emotional, and social well-being needs of our students? Key takeaways here are a need for increasing staff for emotional and social support, such as counselors, social workers, emotional support teachers, develop a standardized SEL curriculum to foster emotional resilience, social skills, and inclusivity, expand non-sports extracurriculars to give all students a sense of belonging, enhance anti-bullying initiatives and teacher training on how to respond, improve pedestrian and safety measures, adopt a clear district-wide cellphone policy with a balance between eliminating distractions and maintaining accessibility in emergencies, and improve options in the cafeteria for students to choose from at the elementary level. The kids were very passionate about that one.
I've heard a lot.
They gave me a lot of feedback on what they like and what they don't like, and we have some really good stuff for the lunch program. It's kind of hard when you're transporting it across the district. For this particular question, we had a carve-out regarding cellphones. Sixty-five percent of respondents to our survey said that the importance of implementing a cellphone ban was slightly very or extremely important. What recommendations would you make regarding the usage of cellphones in our schools? Some key takeaways here. Majority of parents support a ban at least through eighth grade, with mixed opinions on high school. Phones contribute to distraction, cheating, social anxiety, and cyberbullying. Research cited on negative effects of phone use on adolescent mental health, such as attention span, social skills, and stress levels. Teachers report concerns with being the enforcer. Some parents feel phones are necessary for safety and emergency communication. Others worry about the logistics of an enforcement and suggest a more balanced policy instead of a full ban. Some believe phone use should be an individual family decision rather than a school-mandated rule. The second half of the cellphone conversation was related to solutions that some of the participants gave. One solution was a "way-for-the-day" policy. Phones must remain in backpacks, lockers, not on students. Consistent enforcement across all the schools and classrooms. Increase digital literacy education to teach responsible phone use. Use of phone pouches, like lockable bags, where students store phones during the school day. And then different approaches for elementary, middle, and high school instead of a one-size-fits-all. The next question, question five, was thirty-one percent of respondents are satisfied with the stewardship of district finances. Balancing the need to be good stewards of the community's financial investment in our district, along with the need to support the district's mission and vision, can be challenging. What are your thoughts on how to manage this balance, and where should the funding be prioritized? Key takeaways from this question were prioritize financial transparency, focus spending on teachers and student support, ensure funding aligns with the district's mission, update curriculum and technology, modernize academic offerings, and improve digital learning tools, maintain strong safety measures by continuing investments in physical security while addressing in-school behavioral concerns, expand extracurricular access, ensure funding is equitably distributed across arts, clubs, and athletics, and then balance athletic program resources. Ensure all sports and activities receive fair investment to support increases in participation Question number six. How can the district enhance family and community involvement in two-way communication? Key takeaways from this one are standardized teacher communication practices, create a single-parent portal and reduce the multiple logins, and provide a centralized hub for things like Power School, Schoology attendance, and lunch accounts. Improve website navigation. Add a few quick link sections for key forums and enhance translation features. Enhance transparency on board decisions. Summarize major decisions in a more accessible format, such as videos, bullet points, and newsletters. And then the second, because there was quite a few for this one, part two is, did I read these ones already?
No, you're good.
Okay. The first one looked very similar to the last one, sorry. Expand two-way communication opportunities with the school board. Improve Schoology usability for students and parents. Provide better transition support for new families by offering more orientation opportunities to help parents and students adjust. And then engage the broader community. Increase outreach to residents without children in the district through local media, newsletters, or special events. And then our closing question was, of all the things that we discussed today, what would you say are the most important issues? And is there anything else you would like to share? These are the key takeaways from this area. Financial stewardship and transparency, special education and student support services, staffing and teacher support, curriculum development and equity, technology, digital wellness, and cellphone policies, social and emotional learning and student well-being, diversity, equity, and inclusion, communication and transparency, extracurricular activities, arts, and athletics, and school safety and physical environment. So just a couple of notes about next steps. The next steps are planning group work sessions, where we'll conduct work sessions with planning groups such as staff, administration, board, PTA, students, and community. The next couple of weeks is gonna be spent reviewing survey and focus group results and developing key areas of focus, developing goals and timeline for completion, reviewing and revising the mission and the vision, potentially developing action plans, and develop a plan for reviewing and monitoring progress. That's obviously not gonna happen in the next two weeks, but the first one will, and the remainder of those things will take place between now and May when we present a draft of the plan. And again, I want to offer a huge thank you to everyone that participated in the focus group. It was an hour and a half of their time. Sometimes it's really challenging to step away for an hour and a half, but they were very engaged and gave us some really great ideas. And this is just a reminder about the timeline, and that's all I have, Mrs. Fleischer.
Thank you. And I know we might have some questions at the board table just about next steps, so I was gonna, before we move on, even though this isn't usually a Q and A portion, see if there are any questions from the board about the planning group work sessions or drafting the plan. We're good. No questions. All right. Moving on to Board Member Reports. Policy Committee, please, Ms. Guth.
Sure. Excuse me. In our transition from NSBA to PSBA Services, we covered mostly fiscal objectives this week, or this month, and tonight we'll be voting on 601, which is fiscal objectives, 602, budget planning, 603, budget preparation, 604, budget adoption, 605, tax levy, 607, tuition income, 608, bank accounts, 609, investment of direct district funds, 610, purchases subject to bid quotation, 611, purchases budgeted, 613, cooperative purchasing, 614, payroll authorization, 615, payroll deduction, 616, payment of bills, 617, petty cash, 620, fund balance, and 622, gas fee statement, 34, we'll be retiring DFA, DJA, and DJAA.
Can you just say that one more time?
And there's links in the board docs. All the policies we're retiring and the current policies as well, and there's a great search.
Thank you. And Ms. Kramer just had a quick update on sort of how our policy manual, which is the online policies in board docs, are formatted now and in the future.
Since the board, and like many boards before you, are going through them and adopting sections at a time, you will find that once some of these policies go live on board docs in their final form, some of the links will appear to not work or will appear to be leading you to a different district. But that's only because PSBA links internally to their policy manual. So if you look down to the citations at the bottom of each of the policies, if it's linking to a policy that you have not yet adopted, that link will not work. But instead of having to go back and re-add them all as we go through and adopt each of the new sections, they're just there as links that don't work. So if you run into a link that doesn't work and you wonder why, it's because we haven't gotten to that section of the new policy manual yet. And as those sections are adopted, those links will go live and will start to work. But we wanted to make sure that they were still listed there so you knew that there were policies coming that are linked to the policies that you've adopted, if that makes sense, kind of convoluted, but.
It's a rebuilding year, as I say. All right.
In the meantime, though, the policies that are lettered, like JE and all the letters, are, the ones that have not been retired, they can still be seen in board docs, correct?
Yes. PSBA and Board Development, Mrs. Gelman.
Thank you. PSBA is offering, it's that time of year where they are offering student leadership scholarships to graduating seniors from member districts, recognizing those who have demonstrated ongoing leadership. They're offering four scholarships, ranging from $2,500 to $5,000, where applicants must write an essay discussing their understanding of leadership and plans to develop their leadership skills after high school. Deadline is March 14th, and more information can be found on psbatrust.org. May 13th, mark calendars, is PSBA Advocacy Day at the State Capitol. And lastly, in regard, in addition to the planning group work sessions for the strategic planning, I think we still need to finalize a date for a board development retreat. So we need to figure out next steps for that.
Excellent. MLFE, Mrs. Gensel.
No update today. We'll be meeting next Monday.
Excellent. The Municipal Liaison and Parks and Recreation, Mrs. Crable.
Yes. Parks and Rec will meet this Wednesday, so I don't have anything to report there. But we are at the final stage for our fire chief selection, so we should hear who that will be this week, likely. They are working on a bond right now for mid-year that will have some capital items in it, and still continuing the future discussions around our sports wrecking fields and sidewalk expansion and new safe walking routes. And they're also looking at some road maintenance to see which roads will be fixed shortly and in what order. And that's all I have right now.
Thank you. Parkway West, Ms. Johnson.
So no update on meetings since we last met, but just a reminder that on March 4th, they will be hosting a open house starting at 5:00 p.m., so it's a great time for parents and students to go and attend Parkway to see what options they have to offer to their students.
Thank you. Pathfinder School, Mrs. Burdick.
Yes. So I do have a little more to say tonight than usual. On Thursday, we shared some information that an upcoming meeting this Wednesday in two days, I'll be asked to represent our district's position on a vote about a contract that is new. And so in order to represent our thoughts, well, I was hoping to solicit some feedback from all of you at the table about this contract. So I'm gonna describe it really briefly. A little background first. Pathfinder is a small school about 85 to 90 students. It's in Bethel Park. We send about eight to 11 students a year. It's governed by a jointure district. There's five districts in the jointure, ourselves, Upper St. Clair, Carleton, Bethel Park, and CV. And we collectively, as the five of us, own that building and all the stuff that's in it. And we have contracts where we rent that space to primarily the AIU and the programs that they run for students there and have since the '60s. And there's been various contracts, but for 15 years, it was, all tuition and so forth was covered by Act 77. And so there wasn't an exchange of finances toward the jointure, but that's expiring after 15 years. And in 2025, we're starting like a new payment plan. And the proposal in this contract is that the AIU pays a sum that they feel to be not making, we wouldn't be making money off of this, but it is the exact cost of what it costs to run the school and to operate their expenses and staffing and so forth. And students still pay tuition, but that the AIU would pay this jointure a sum of money that would be managed by the Treasury there, and that represents a change because it's not, it's not the same source of funding anymore. And this contract basically defines who pays for what. So we went through all the details, and I'll spare you the details about the boiler and the roof and all the stuff, but it's all in good working order. In fact, federal grant money has been used to replace the boiler, replace pool tiles, all the nitty-gritty, but it's in, the structure itself, as dated as it is, is in pretty good shape. So the jointure would still have to keep paying for that stuff, but there would be money incoming. So we bounced this off of Ms. Kramer, who represents three of those five districts, and the other solicitors as well. We had a back and forth of questions and answers for that, and it's resolved in the contract that was sent to you earlier last week. So I think it looks to be in good order to vote affirmatively on that, but I didn't know if there were questions. I also met with Mrs. Fleischer and Dr. Fries last week, and we nailed down a couple other things. So due diligence has been done. Does anybody have questions as I prepare to vote on this Wednesday that would? We had a back and forth of questions and answers for that. And it's resolved in the contract that was sent to you earlier last week. So I think it looks to be in good order to vote affirmatively on that, but I didn't know if there were questions. I also met with Mrs. Fleischer and Dr. Freeze last week, and we nailed down a couple other things. So due diligence has been done. Does anybody have questions as I prepare to vote on this Wednesday that would, it's an annual contract too, so next time it'll be, well, we're renewing it and the new sum of money, et cetera. But that would be an annual decision. Questions, thoughts?
No, I just want to say thank you, Mrs. Burdick, for your work on this with the rest of the jointure districts. I know that it's a new, more comprehensive operating agreement with the AIU, and it took some doing to get it into shape. I served as the Pathfinder School liaison for four years, and I'm fairly familiar with it and very comfortable with where it is. So thank you. Other questions or comments?
Mrs. Burdick, thank you for your work on this. Obviously, being closer to this than we are, I mean, is it your recommendation that we support this?
It is now. We had to, we had to adjust some things that we were uncomfortable with. And that was a very cooperative process, and we appreciated Mrs. Kramer's input on that on behalf of like all three, all three of the five districts. And then it required the administration of the AIU to come out and give presentations. And there's just, there's been some work on this. It's, it's been good to do. I do recommend that now it's in a good position.
Thank you. Mrs. Kramer, Dr. Freeze, I mean, similar. I mean, you guys have been hands-on with this. Are you comfortable with, with the agreement?
Just by way of background, the AIU has these agreements with multiple jointures. So actually, I represent Steel Center area and that the jointure that owns the buildings there, they also rent Mon Valley to the AIU. And so I had the opportunity to negotiate that lease some time back, which is a little bit different, but similar. And they're doing the same thing with Sunrise and Pathfinder. So they are all going to be consistent across the board. And it, you know, they're all great programs and needed for our students. So yes, I'm long-windedly in favor of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burdick. Shazda will have their evening meeting on Thursday, the 20th, at Upper St. Clair High School at 5:00 PM. And we will have presentations from Weiss, Burkhardt, Kramer on legal and policy updates as well as a participation from the Baldwin Whitehall School District, featuring educational leaders and student advocates. So I will have some more information on those presentations at next month's board meeting. And I think that was open to anyone who wanted to attend. So you should have let Kim know if you also wanted to go. Civic Engagement, Mr. Hoffman.
Yeah, thank you. The Civic Engagement Board last met on a Wednesday, February 5th. I was sick and unable to attend, but they do post videos of the meeting, so I was able to watch that. And a big part of the meeting was a reflection on the Martin Luther King Day of Service that the Civic Engagement Board led. Over 100 people participated in the Day of Service. Activities included writing Valentine's Day cards for seniors at Asbury Heights, cooking meals for those in need, volunteering at local organizations, and more. It was really great to see. It's a really good reminder of, you know, how great this community is, how active people are. So it was really nice to see that level of participation. The next meeting will be Wednesday, March 5th.
Thank you. All right. And our final report this evening is a presentation on capital projects.
And we'll turn it over to Mrs. Connolly for that presentation.
Do you want to do the clicking?
Yes.
Good evening, everybody. This is a presentation on capital projects for 2526. Mr. Marciniac is not able to be with us, so I am going to be doing the presentation that he contributed to as well as Mr. Stangle. So what is a capital project? These are projects that are considered capital in nature if it's new construction, expansion, renovation, or replacement of projects. They extend the life of the original asset more than a year. They are much more than simple repairs and maintenance, and they're significant of nature. There's purchase of equipment, services, and sometimes even textbooks. The reasons why we do capital planning is because it has, it has a very significant budgetary impact. It shows the administration, the staff, the community what projects are being planned. It provides certainty for the future, proactive versus reactive. It prioritizes certain construction and maintenance needs as we go along. It aids our district in financial forecasts and communicates a long-term need. Capital planning ensures infrastructure is maintained and upgraded, and it provides a framework for funding the allocations. It increases efficiency of planning, bidding, and engineering when we have a well-made plan. And also, it allows time to plan for these larger projects. So we have to prioritize projects, and this is both on the facility side and in technology. On the facility side, we have annual meetings with principals, head custodians, department heads, and administration. There are routine and very involved inspections and audits of our facilities. The useful life of equipment is assessed. We always consider safety and security, and we look at our enrollment projections. We also have to consider legislation, regulations, and school code, as well as authorities having jurisdiction over us. These are enforcement codes, standards, and regulations related to building construction, fire prevention, and life safety, for example. We also have to plan for our vehicles and equipment within the buildings, such as boilers and heavy-duty like freezers for our food service program. This is a list of capital projects. I won't read it to you, but it gives you examples of items that we definitely consider as we plan for our projects. The facilities department and the technology department have this in mind every time they're doing their budgeting, as well as in discussion with the administration and principals. This is a slide that shows you what our budget projections are for the next five years. This is merely a forecast and is not based on actual bid estimates. These projections are best guessed estimates based on conditions at the present time. So as you can see, the 2025 starts with a lower number than five years out, which is close to eight million, eight and a half million and two and a half million. We will have different renovations on our buildings.
And those are fiscal years?
Yes. These are the approved capital budgets. It's just a timeline. Ten-year average was $749,277. And we also have a PCCD Safety and Security Grant. PCC stands for the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency. We currently have a one-time grant for $197,522. And the below items will be purchased and installed with that money. We have a Hoover Elementary School intercom system replacement. We also have an intercom system replacement at Jefferson Middle and Elementary Schools. We are purchasing additional security cameras for Lincoln, Hoover, and Howell. And we are going to be doing more safe, security window film at Hoover, Lincoln, and Mount Lebanon High School. This is the five-year plan of, that would represent those numbers that we just reviewed a few slides ago. It goes from '25 to 2029.
Mrs. Connolly, some of the bigger numbers, of course, are a little bit later in the five-year plan, and that's consistent with the budget recovery strategy that the administration has been executing as of late, last year and this year, and certainly next year. But when we get deeper into this five-year plan, when we get towards that $8 million number in 2028, is that aligned with an opportunity to refinance a bond, or that's just projected based on need or, or budget recovery, or a combination of all of the above?
It's based on the useful life of the equipment that's listed. We do have a callable bond coming up, and that would coincide with these, this year's sequence.
Thank you.
So this slide more or less focuses on the technology capital projects. As you can see, Mr. Stangle also has a five-year plan. The annual capital breakdown is $125,000 for classroom PCs and laptops, $225,000 for secondary student Chromebooks replacement, $200,000 for an elementary student Chromebook and iPads, and $175,000 towards the district classroom project, TV, et cetera. These are numbers that make up the $800,000 that you see in year one. It'll be part of the budget planning process. Year one only has a $75,000 inclusion for remaining network switch replacements. Mr. Stangle was able to negotiate this cost down from $150,000.
This is in addition to the previous slide of the capital budget projections?
Yes.
Separate from?
Yes, this is part of the technology budget.
So we previously had not looked at technology as a capital fund, but we've moved in that direction because it aligns with what a, what the definition of capital funding is. And so this presentation today is a combination of the one in October that Mr. Marciniac gave and Mr. Stangle gave. But now that we've had time to kind of process it, we wanted to put it together so you could see the total picture. Just to give a note of review.
Okay. So this next slide talks about our budget projections towards our auditoriums. We do have needs in the auditoriums. Again, Mr. Stangle has budgeted over seven years, and they include almost all of the schools. There's also a high school LED replacement project that is also going to be included in the budgeting process this year. Moving from, moving into LED lighting would be a cost savings, but it would take a few years to recover the cost. And then finally, these, this is the capital needs, technology totals for year one. That breaks it out, the equipment and the auditoriums. Year one is almost $1 million. And you can see it's a pretty level base need across these seven years so that we don't have huge highs and lows. Does anyone have any questions?
The LED, sorry.
Go ahead, Jake.
No, please, go ahead, Ms. Crable.
I just had a quick question. I, it's kind of small for me. Did we have anything on the grandstands? I know it's going to be an exorbitant amount, but I do think it's important to also highlight that that should be something that we're considering.
We do. That's on slide nine. I have it on the screen right now. That's projected to be done in 2028. And it says the athletic facility replaced home grandstands.
Great, thanks. It's kind of tiny at home, so I couldn't, I couldn't see it. Thank you.
It's tiny here, too.
Thanks.
The LED lighting project that you mentioned there at the end, is that, so we had the, the capital projects number, the.
That is in there.
Technology capital projects number, is the LED lighting, and then we had a number for the theaters, and then the LED lighting. Is the LED lighting a fourth separate number in addition to the other three?
Yes, sir. It's part of the facility's budget. Mr. Marciniac asked me to highlight it because it would be a project, but we would get our money back in due time due to the savings of moving over to LED.
But the number itself is in the first number, the 300 and?
Yes.
Thirty-nine dollar.
That's my understanding, yes.
Sorry, I don't have a microphone. I'll try to pick it up. But there's also an element of the auditorium lighting.
Okay.
Which is drastically old, and when it breaks, it's hard to find a replacement for, and very expensive when you do. So we've been doing multiple phase replacement of auditorium lighting as well.
Okay. That's part of that LED number, Mr. Stangle, or?
LED number of.
Fifty-five thousand.
Fifty-six, that was specific to the auditorium.
Okay. Thank you.
I was surprised to see the replacing the center court roof on here, which I recognize is not for the upcoming year, but it would be in a future year. Because that's part of the completion of the high school renovations, still seems relatively recent to me. Maybe, maybe it has a shorter lifespan than I thought. But when we do replace that, I remember from my time serving on the Environmental Sustainability Board that there was a real interest in having solar lighting, solar panels installed, but there was concern about drilling into the roof. And so it was suggested that at a time when we do replace it, that that would be a consideration. I just wanted to remind that that was a community request from about a year or so ago, from the time that I was in that municipal board. Don't know if that's realistic.
Do you want to answer that question?
Yes, Mrs. Burdick, if I may. So if my memory, Mr. Marciniac's not here, but if my memory serves me correctly, the roof that is over the center court was not replaced during the high school project. I think during the high school project, it was in a seven to 10-year lifespan, and they thought it had another 10 years on it. So I think we're coming up on the tail end of that period of time. But you're absolutely right about the concern about putting solar panels on the roof. But that's the only reason why it is on here, because during the high school construction, it was not done as part of the project.
Okay.
Do you think it's realistic for us to consider just leaning into that question about what, what it would cost and what would it save us overall if we did have solar capacity up there? And we, can we just pass that along as a reminder and a suggestion?
Yes.
Ms. Fleischer? I'd also like to mention that in 2025, on this slide, we have a high school stadium turf replacement that is under warranty, and there will be no added cost for that.
Excellent.
More of those, please.
And I know that's usually fun to try and schedule around activities, but.
The project will begin two days after commencement this year, and they typically take about a month to turn around, but they believe that they'll have everything ready in a month. It's important that we get it done only because it is a very new turf, and it is shedding a lot and has just some maintenance issues. And when they came out to evaluate its life expectancy, they said that they would replace it for free. So we will very gladly accept a free new turf that is better quality than the current one.
When you say the day after commencement, that's also a rain date for commencement, so.
Two days after commencement. So ReLife4Life will happen, and then the very next day they'll start.
And it's not going to rain. It would never do that.
No, it would never rain.
Excellent. Any other questions on the capital project slides? Thank you, Mrs. Connolly and Mr. Stangle for that. Okay. At this point, we have a time for questions or comments from residents regarding action items for this meeting. uh, regarding, uh, action items for this meeting. Uh, so that would be the finite policy, financial and human resources items. Um, is there anyone who wishes to speak on action items for this meeting? Or online? None, okay. And we don't have any unfinished business, so we'll move right in to, uh, Agenda Item Six. Mr. Hoffman, can you, I apologize, read this lengthy resolution?
I move that it be resolved.
I move that it be resolved that the board adopts Policies Six-O-One, Fiscal Objectives, Six-O-Two, Budget Planning, Six-O-Three, Budget Preparation, Six-O-Four, Budget Adoption, Six-O-Five, Tax Levy, Six-O-Seven, Tuition Income, Six-O-Eight, Bank Accounts, Six-O-Nine, Investment of District Funds, Six-Ten, Purchases Subject to Bid Quotation, Six-Eleven, Purchases Budgeted, Six-Thirteen, Cooperative Purchasing, Six-Fourteen, Payroll Authorization, Six-Fifteen, Payroll Deductions, Six-Sixteen, Payment of Bills, and Six- Seventeen, Petty Cash, Six-Twenty, Fund Balance, Six-Twenty-Two, G A S B Statement Twenty-four, and Retires Policies, D F A Investment of District Funds, D J A A Construction Contracts, Bidding and Awards, and D J A Purchasing Authority.
Second.
Any, uh, discussion?
I think it's just significant to note that we're retiring three, um, fairly, um, li-. Their size was larger, but we're, um, spelling it out in seventeen different ways, which I think lends to better understanding of our policies around finance, and it also is more complete, um, and thorough and careful than the, you know, than the three that we're retiring. So it speaks to the board's commitment to fiscal responsibility and transparency and being able to find what you're looking for, because they're well-named and they're well-numbered. Um, and the information is there in, in, um, board docs. So I see it as a positive.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions, or discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Moving on to the finance items, um, these include our treasurer's report, our monthly lists of bills, the list of tax refunds, budgetary transfers for February, the list of unusable, unusable equipment, the Parkway West C T C, general operating and jointure budgets, front, frontline absence management, software renewal, frontline applicant tracker software renewal, the twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five Ready to Learn Block Grant. Um, can you please read Resolution I, Mrs. Gelman?
Sure. I move that it be resolved that the board approves the finance agenda items. Second.
Okay. Do we have any discussion of the items? All right, roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
Okay. And then finally, we have our human resources items, including the personnel report. Um, can you read the resolution, please, Mrs. Genzel?
Sure. I move that it be resolved, the board approves the human resources agenda items.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, please. Mrs. Burdick?
Aye.
Mrs. Crable?
Aye.
Ms. Fleischer?
Aye.
Mrs. Gelman?
Aye.
Mrs. Genzel?
Aye.
Ms. Guth?
Aye.
Mr. Hoffman?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Wyland?
Aye.
All right. Um, we're now open to questions or comments from residents. This public comment period is open to residents and taxpayers regarding matters of concern, official action or deliberation, which are or may be before the board. All commenters should begin by stating their name. Comments are limited to three minutes and will notify commenters when their time has expired. Questions requiring follow-up will be referred to the administration for later response. Comments by public participants are their own and should not be assumed to be the statements of the district. The Mount Lebanon School District is committed to providing a safe, inclusive, and welcoming school environment that recognizes and celebrates the diverse identities within our community, so everyone feels a sense of belonging. Do we have anyone who wishes to speak? Or online? None, okay. I'd like to announce upcoming public meetings. Um, and I believe I already announced, but the board did meet an executive session on Monday, February tenth for, um, discussion of litigation and legal items. Um, but just in case, I'll say it again. Uh, we have on March tenth, twenty-twenty-five, at six P M, a policy committee meeting in D two-oh-five of the Mount Lebanon High School and on Zoom. Um, on March tenth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven-thirty P M, the board discussion meeting in D two-oh-five of the Mount Lebanon High School and on Zoom. And on March seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five, at seven-thirty P M, the board regular meeting in room D two-oh-five of the Mount Lebanon High School and on Zoom. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, thank you.